Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 26th, 2022 Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
We have five selectmen here: Ron Bessie, Jared Chadwick, Judith Whiteside, Tricia Wertz, and Alan Slaven. Town council and town administrator are not present.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Madam Moderator. Come on.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some presentations for later on, and we had, because we had to cancel our executive session, we've begun the meeting a little bit earlier than we thought we would. However, the presentations are going to be after 7:00, and we have a hearing at 7:15 and one at 7:25, so we must keep those times available. So I'm going to jump to announcements. Mr. Bessie?
No announcements. I mean, I can, I can talk about our meeting that we had on Saturday for newly elected Select Board Training.
Thank you.
So, yes, on Saturday, we had the pleasure of being able to spend a day with selectmen in and around the state to go over some really important stuff, talking about what, what to expect now that we're elected. But I think some of the biggest things that were of real importance was talking about open meeting law, public records law, and really defining, you know, what is a violation, what isn't a violation. It was definitely eye-opening and good to see some really good information for us as being newly elected and understanding how to keep ourselves in line with the laws and making sure that we're not violating and causing issues with stuff going to the state. So it was good, I enjoyed it. It was definitely informative, and I'm looking forward to the next one that they're talking about in October.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick, announcements?
I'm going to tap off of what Mr. Bessie said over here. Like he said, both of us attended this. It was a very informative meeting. Learned a lot about how the rules are and what the other towns have brought to their tables, interesting ideas that we can bring possibly to our town in the future. Like I said, it was very informative, and it was a good time. My other announcement I have is-
Can I just ask you, where was this place?
Fort Devens.
Fort Devens.
Excuse me, I didn't ask you. Where was it, please?
It was at Fort Devens, Mass.
Air Mass?
Fort, Fort Devens, about an hour and a half north of us.
It's in Air, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is, it's still not, it's not called Fort Devens.
No, it's Devens, it's Devens, Mass.
It's right outside of the base, though.
Yeah. Okay.
Pretty in-
Yep.
A lot of windy roads up there.
Yeah, and how, how, was it a day-long thing?
Yeah, we checked in at 8:30 in the morning. We actually got there about 8:00, and they had a meet and greet, and we were able to meet other people around, met a Select Board member from Marion who I've met before briefly, got to talk to him for a little while. You know, meeting some people from around other towns was probably the coolest part about it, and we do have a list of contacts that we can actually reach out to each and every member that went to it.
Nice.
In case there's ever any questions. And we also received a couple of slideshows of the intro to open meeting and public laws, which we can always go back to if we need to, which was really neat, I've already looked through it again. And we also got a slideshow from Municipal Finance and Budgeting 101, done by Pamela Dukeman, who is actually the Assistant Town Administrator and Finance Director of Westwood.
So you, you had a slideshow about the open meeting law?
Yes.
Is it okay for us to use it?
Yes.
I think it'd be a phenomenal idea.
Okay, so can you just send me an email and ask when we could schedule that, and we can certainly make it available to all of our committees?
I think that'd be perfect.
Okay, I think that would be perfect, too.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we, we learned the most is there's, there's no such thing as plagiarism when it comes to being on a Select Board. You can kind of share information back and forth and use ideas from other towns. So that's nice that, you know, something that is working in another town, it may not work, but it's something that could be looked at. So I thought that was nice that you could tap into that and have outside resources other than just here in town, so that was nice.
So how long is the presentation on the open meeting law?
About, it was about an hour and a half, I think, for, between that and questions and answers.
Okay, but if it was just a slideshow, if you just-
If you would, if you were doing self-paced?
Yeah.
I mean, probably maybe a half hour just to go through everything and read it.
Would you gentlemen be willing to do a workshop and do the slideshow for boards and committees?
Absolutely.
And anybody else who feels like-
I think, I think that would be, that would be good, especially for, for new members of committees.
I think that's great. Let's talk about what would be an appropriate time, and maybe you're going to have to do it two or three times to make sure that you get the coverage. I think it's really important.
I think, I think it'd be a great idea, and also possibly to videotape it, more or less, you know, so the public can see it, too, because I do see a lot of questions, obviously, about open meeting laws and stuff, and it'd be great for everyone to see and understand.
Then maybe what we do is we arrange with WCTV to cover the presentation that you gentlemen do and then run it on a loop.
Okay.
What do you think?
I think that's a good idea.
Awesome.
The way it gets it out there so people can see it.
Awesome, I like that, thank you. You had another one?
Yes. This, let me just double-check, make sure the date is correct here. July 30th is the ribbon-cutting ceremony in Onset at the Hammond School for the Scotty Montero Junior Basketball Court. It's next to the pickleball courts as well, and all day from, I believe, 8:00 until 6:00. It's a town event that's going to have face painting and, I believe, balloon animals, a whole array of stuff, along with a whole bunch of basketball tournaments, and I believe they are still searching for a food truck, so if anyone knows any town-approved food trucks, please send them my way.
Thank you. You might want to check with Mr. McDonald and the-
I've booked-
You've already done that, okay.
Problem is last second, and I, not last second, but everyone's been booked up for months.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, thank you. You're all set?
Yes.
Thanks. Mr. Slaven?
Good evening. Just like to thank everybody who helped and actually participated and came to the Wareham Community Association's bake last Wednesday. We basically cut the number at 150, easily sold out, and everybody had a very good time. We had no issues at all, and we basically made our numbers, so we'll be giving out most likely five or six scholarships to Wareham students come next spring. What else we have is Kim Shaver-Hood had a little going-away party for her yesterday. We took a magical mystery ride with a school bus, which is just wonderful, the seats are just great. I advise any adult to try and sit in one of those things. We started out at the back of the high school, and we went around town, elementary school, Nazarellas, library, ended up one of the teachers', the school committee members' houses and stuff, and it was a nice event. Kim had a great time, and it was good to say hello and goodbye. Those people who were traveling on Route 6 and 28 in East Wareham, I know we've been complaining for a year and a half. If you look very closely, the sidewalks are most, almost done all the way down past Redbrook, which is what they plan to do, so we'll have sidewalks on both sides. Most of the poles have been repositioned. There's still a few that are not, they're right in the middle of the sidewalks, which will be moving out. Most businesses, their entrances have been repaired, signs that had to be moved are moved, and the next step most likely will be the actual, what I call, permanent repaving of 6 and 28. And everybody sees what's been done. These are just temporary patchwork, because once this happens, it'll be at least five years before you can dig the road up. So we've got actually two sets of areas that we'll go through, it's a base coat and a top coat. So that will be happening probably, hopefully you might get done by the end of this year and be all done with it. I give the state a lot of credit, they've taken a lot of hits on this and the builder, and they've done everything, every time we have an issue, they take care of it. I want to thank everybody again for putting up with this, it'll be a very safe road when we're done with it.
Can I just ask you, while you're on that subject, can you remind us what it's going to look like? Is there, because I've seen two sort of ideas of-
Well, there's gonna be-
Are those those wiggly poles in the middle, or is there cement? Or what is it?
There'll be turnarounds in three different spots. There'll be basically a divider going down the road, which is probably three or four inches tall. I believe it's going to be granite with a square cut, so if you were to try and drive over it as a regular passenger car, you'll probably leave your wheels and tires behind. And that will go all the way down the road, there'll be brakes to turn around, et cetera. And that's the last piece that will be done of those.
Where are the three turnarounds?
There's one up by Stop &amp; Shop, there's another one a little farther down, and there's another one at what we call Redbrook Road as well.
Are they, they're jug-handle turnarounds?
They're jug-handle turnarounds, and actually Main Ave is another one. And they've already been engineered and everything else, and also the area where we always had flooding down by the 99 and stuff for the old place, that's been completely engineered, and everything is fine there now. Everything goes into what is called Dix Pond over there.
It is, yeah.
You know, the stormwater goes where it's supposed to go now.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
More?
I want to repeat, the boys did have a good time at the MMA event because they ate well.
We can't hear you if you're-
I said the boys ate well at the MMA event, by the way.
Well, we left, we left that part out. I just wanted to piggyback off of what Alan was talking about on Route 6. I believe I read that they were supposed to be starting those medians tomorrow.
Yeah, I asked them to wait as long as they could because we're going to have people try and go over them while they're temporarily putting them down. You're not going to make it going over them.
Yeah, so that's, I just, that's, I remember reading that, and I just didn't know if that changed, but it sounds like you might-
It's the last piece.
Okay.
Before the paving.
That's it.
Thank you.
And I think that's, that's all I have right now, I have more stuff later on.
Okay. Ms. Wertz?
My only announcement is it's wonderful to be back, and I'm looking forward to continuing to contribute.
All set?
That's it.
Okay. I have a fair number of announcements. I have some congratulation announcements. First of all, the Wareham Department of Natural Resources has a new officer, Morgan Matioli. She successfully graduated from the 4th ROC Cape Cod Municipal Full-Time Academy. I think she was number two in her class, she might have been number one, number one. Graduation ceremony was held on July 15th at Joint Base Cape Cod, and Officer Matioli excelled in her academics as well as the physical part of it as well. Community is very fortunate to have such an outstanding individual join the Department of Natural Resources, so congratulations to her and congratulations to us. Another congratulation announcement was actually, both of these were featured in the local newspaper. When I was a teacher at the high school, I had the pleasure of working with a gentleman named Michael Collins. Michael Collins is a little bit younger than I am, but not much. He was a history/social studies teacher in the high school, and he encouraged people to sign up to vote the instant they turned 18. He actually, I think, gave a test grade if you signed up and brought back your voter registration card, and so he encouraged citizen participation in the high school. Mike was recognized recently by the United States Army, and the reason he was recognized by the United States Army is because he was instrumental in starting the JROTC program at the Wareham High School. From the Army, he received the Public Service Commendation Medal for his years of service to the school and to the community. Mr. Collins is a U.S. Army veteran, and he was honored for establishing this program. I have to say that I worked closely with Mr. Collins as well as Mr. Stanton, Matt Stanton at the high school, and while I was not originally in favor of the JROTC program, because I'm old enough to think of kids being cannon fodder, I have to say that I am a great supporter of the program because I think it has helped a lot of people, men and women, in the high school become who they can in fact become, give them some self-confidence. High school principal Scott Palladino made the award on behalf of the United States Army. Announcements. Hazardous Products and Household Electronics Collection is going to be held at the Town Barn on Charge Pond Road on Saturday, August 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Residents need a valid transfer station sticker, and online, there's a list of what they will and what they will not accept. Please go to the town website before bringing items on that day to be sure that they will be accepted. And I can tell you from past experience, it's a very popular event, so get there early, okay? Wareham Land Trust has two projects that could use some help. Tomorrow, July 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, volunteers are needed to remove Japanese knotweed and honeysuckle from a section of the Onset Water District property. All of the tools will be provided by the land trust, but if you have your own gloves and clippers and all that other good stuff, bring it as well. The second project is on Thursday, on the 28th. You can join the land trust to help build a trailhead kiosk at the North Water Street Beach. That day, there's a morning shift from 8:00 to 11:00 and an afternoon shift from 12:30 to 3:30. Go to warehamlandtrust.org for more information and to sign up for either or both projects. What are you guys doing? They like, you know, strong young men, what can I tell you?
I'm working, sorry.
I'm sorry, okay. Wareham Dog Park Youth Arts Contest is again being run this year. It's called Unleash the Possibilities Area Youth Creative Contest, now accepting submissions through August 10th. You can hand in your submissions at either the Gleason YMCA, TD Bank, the Wareham Free Library, and the Onset Bay Association. There will be three awards in the visual category, and there will be three awards for the literary category, and they will be awarded at the end of, mid-August. And as in the past, the gallery winners will be displayed at the Wareham Post Office. If you haven't been to Music from Land's End of Wareham, you are missing a world-class music performance. The third and final concert in August, the program was brought to Wareham by artistic director Ariadne Duskalakis, who is going to be performing on August 13th at St. Gabriel's Church in Marion at 5:30, and Sunday, August 14th, at Wareham's Church of the Good Shepherd at 5:00 p.m. I can tell you that the arrangements this year go from classical to pop to rock and good old Beatles stuff. It's really good music, and they are in fact world-class musicians who are here donating their, their skills to the towns. This is the 10th year that Wareham, Land's End Music has been here. Part of the programs are paid for through the Wareham Cultural Council, one of our committees here in town. Wareham Free Library continues a Summer of Family Fun sponsored by the Friends of the Library. Tomorrow, Wednesday, the 27th, Alison O'Leary will present a virtual trip through the backroads of New England at 7:00 p.m. with her discussion, Hidden Gems of New England. The Concert on the Lawn series will bring the Twang Town Paramours to the library lawn on Monday, August 1st at 7:00 p.m. This Nashville-based duo will close out the summer concert series with Americana, folk, and blues anthems. On Tuesday, August 2nd, at 6:30 p.m., enjoy the four Flying High Frisbee Dogs in the library's backyard. I guess they really are dogs that chase frisbees. I never could get my dogs to do that. Finally, on August 3rd, at 7:00 p.m., hear author Paul Claracy present Running Cape Cod, which is the history of the Falmouth Road Race. If you've ever watched that race, it's pretty impressive. I believe it's a 10K, am I right? Yeah. So mark your calendar for the end-of-the-summer dance party with DJ Ouch and the Boston Bruins' mascot Blades, which is on Thursday, August 11th at 10:00 a.m. The library has three very strong supporting groups: the Friends of the Wareham Library, the Wareham Library Foundation, and most of these programs that I've just read off to you are supported by our cultural council as well. Not to be left out, Onset Bay Association will have its regular Onset Blues Festival on Sunday, August 7th, from noon to 5:00 p.m. at the Onset VFW Pavilion. I know that Mr. Slaven particularly enjoys that session. There will be great music and vendors and food trucks and a guitar raffle. Mr. Bowen, if you're living, listening to this, you could probably get a few tickets for the guitar raffle. Reserve a picnic table for eight for $50, and walk-in tickets are $5. Go to www.onsetbay.org to get a reservation. Wareham Public Schools are continuing the food distribution program. Remember that the program continues for free breakfasts and lunches for students and teens up to the age of 18. Parents or guardians can pick up the meals that are served Monday through Thursday through August 18th. You don't need a student ID to pick the food up. Meals are distributed at the following locations: Wareham High School drop-off area at 7 Viking Drive from 11 to 1145. Woods at Wareham is 1150 to 1220, and that's at 36 Swift's Beach Road. Wareham Elementary School pickup at the east side entrance on 63 Main at Ave is from 1045 to 1130, and the Onset Banshell is at 4 Union Ave from 1150 to 1220. We have many programs in town that support food insecurity. This is one of them that makes sure that children do not go hungry over the weekends because the Thursday meals contain three, I believe, or four if it's a long weekend. Wareham Council on Aging tomorrow, you can go and play bingo, Alan, and stay cool. No, Alan doesn't play bingo, okay? There are going to be cash prizes. Bingo cards are three bucks a piece or two for five. The June raffle by the Advocates for Wareham Seniors to benefit the COA will be for the Viking tickets for Canal Cruise. Remember that the Council on Aging has a variety of exercise programs as well as card games and crafts. Follow them on their Facebook page or sign up to receive the senior beacon. Call 508-291-3130 for more information. And the Wareham Redmen will return with their old-fashioned New England clam bake on Sunday, August 7th. Doors open at 10:30 and the meals served at 1:00 p.m. Tickets are $48. Buy them now or you will never get in, I can promise you that. Call 508-291-0882 for the tickets. It's a very, very popular event. And then I'm guessing that most of you had trouble finding a parking place tonight, am I correct? Well, the reason you had trouble finding a parking place tonight is, tonight is one of the Cape Cod League baseball games. Wareham Gaetman have been playing here in Wareham since at least the 1930s. The Twilight League predates the Wareham Gaetman and predates the Cape Cod League. Just because it's a baseball game and it's free, I think you should all take advantage, but there's an even better reason. I'm going to read you some names. These are all Gaetman alumni. Lance Berkman, Dallas Keichel, Barry Zito, Mo Vaughn, Chuck Knoblock, Carlos Peña, Nick Swisher, Kyle Schwaber, Ben Sheets, Brandon Workman, Matt Barnes, Justin Masterson, Jerry Hairston, and this year's 53rd pick in the second round, Adam Mazer, okay? And just as a side, Jerry Hairston actually was the third generation of his family to play baseball. Jerry's grandfather and father played in the Negro Leeds. He was an absolutely outstanding and very funny player here. The Gaetman have won nine Cape Cod League baseball championships starting in 1930s, and the last two were in 2012 and 2018. The only criticism I can tell you is that the bugs are terrible on the field. Other than that, you will enjoy every minute of watching these world-class college kids who are here for a very short period of time. Now, let's go to, I'm going to, we need to skip around a little bit because we have some presentations that need to be done at a specific time. Ms. Wertz, may I have a motion to do number 8B, please, with the confirmatory vote?
This is an, I, I make a motion to authorize a confirmatory vote for Chair to, for the Chair to submit a letter to Senator Pacico to combine S-2504, S-2506, and S-2855 bills into one bill known as S-2855, originally approved under 48 hours business on July 12th, 2022.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We had to, we were being asked to combine three bills that had to do with the liquor licenses, and in order to help everybody just not do a whole lot of paperwork, I brought it up under 48 hours on July 12th, and as required by the open meeting law, we had to bring it back for a confirmatory vote. The letter did go out to the Senator's office, and the bill has been processed, thank you very much. I'd like a motion, please, to, under 8C, to sign the Massachusetts September 6th, 2022 State Primary Warrant.
So I make a motion that we vote to sign the Massachusetts September 6th, 2022 State Primary Warrant.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This is a routine thing that we do. We need to sign off on the warrant, it's then returned to the town clerk, and she returns it to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, unanimous. Do you have that document in your folder?
Probably buried someplace here.
Okay. And if you'll give it to Mr. Slaven, he can just start. Thanks.
I think that's the right one, Alan.
Can I have a motion on 8D, which is the donation acceptance, please?
I make a motion that we accept a donation in the amount of $400 to the Council on Aging from the First Congregational Church of Wareham.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept a generous gift from the Congregational Church of Wareham to be donated to the Council on Aging. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. I will be signing a letter of thanks to, to the church, and we will now go to... Can we have a motion under 6B, which is a reappointment for an individual on the Council on Aging, please?
I make a motion that we appoint Marie Riley to the Council on Aging with a term to expire June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Now, because of the number of members on that council, we try and stagger the expiring dates, so that's why it may look shorter than normal. Ms. Smith, I'm going to ask you if you could let the individuals in the hall know that they're more than welcome to come in if they'd like. Thank you. I will accept a motion on 7D, the-
Did we vote on this last one?
Did we? I don't think, no, we voted, I don't think we voted.
Yeah, we did. All those in favor of accepting the donation?
No, that was on Riley's-
For Marie Riley.
Oh, sorry. No, we did, let's do it again. Motion to appoint Marie Riley to a term to expire June 30th, 2023. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, and is unanimous. I will remind all people who are appointed or reappointed to any board or commission in this town that our process is now that you must provide evidence of having taken the class on the ethics as well as signing that you have read the open- the class on the ethics as well as signing that you have read the open meeting law. Once you have given those two documents to our office, they will give you the paperwork to be signed in at the clerk's office. We're really doing well. Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion on 7D, which are two secondhand license, secondhand dealers' licenses.
I make a motion that we approve a secondhand dealer's license for Clam Shack Antiques and Home Depot USA Inc.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I will tell you that all of the paperwork is in order, including insurance, binders, et cetera. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve those two? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, and is unanimous. Thank you very much. There's no one here from Buzzards Bay, am I right? Oh, you're here from Buzzards Bay. Do you want to come on up? We're a little early, but that's because we're...
About seven.
It is seven, but we, yeah. Can you introduce yourself, please, and tell us what you're looking for?
Absolutely. My name is Jonah Garin. I'm the event manager for the Buzzards Bay Coalition, and we are looking to run our 16th Annual Watershed Ride through Wareham. So we've been doing the similar route for many years now, so it's the same route that we're looking for as last year. We start the ride in Little Compton and it ends in Woods Hole, so we just pass through on public roads of Wareham. No need for road closures or anything like that, just want approval to be able to use the public roads. We're excited to be able to do it again this year in Wareham.
How many miles is that?
In Wareham?
No.
Oh, the whole route is 100.
Is 100 miles?
Yep.
And do you raise money through it?
We do, yes. So it all comes back to organizations. We're a nonprofit based in New Bedford, so every rider raises at least $300 for the organization.
Awesome. And do you have repeat riders every year?
We do, yeah. Yeah, we usually have at least 50, 60% come back every year, and we're anticipating about 500 riders this year.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you very much. The route and all of the sign-offs were given to you in your packet?
Yes.
And I don't see any questions or comments. Mr. Slavin, do you have any concerns?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Then we would actually, let's do the permit for the use of the roads first, please, which is 7E.
I make a motion that we issue a permit application for use of town roads for the Buzzards Bay Coalition Watershed Ride scheduled on October 2nd, 2022.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Good question.
Yes.
This is Rayna Shin.
Excuse me. Through the mic. You're very soft spoken. Through the mic.
Rayna Shin.
Yes, it is, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor say, oh, we already did that, trying to confuse me. All right. Can you tell us, tell us about the signs, please?
Yes, so we have a handful of sort of directional signs for riders.
And he asked a question afterwards.
No, we didn't vote.
No, we didn't.
Okay, this one, we didn't vote.
No, I just seconded it.
Okay, go back. Excuse me, you seconded, Mr. Garin? All those in favor of permitting the use of the roads, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing unanimous. Thank you. Now go.
Yes, so the signs, they're small little signs, just directional signs for riders, so it's just basically a red arrow that says Buzzards Bay Watershed Ride, just sort of on those H stands, just making sure people know the right turns and make sure they go the right direction. I believe, I think I said maybe 15 or so, I can't remember the exact number, but, and we would put them out the day before and pick them up the day after the ride.
Thank you. And you don't put any on telephone poles or any private property, am I correct?
Nope, just stick them in the ground and pick them up later.
Thank you very much. Any further questions, the gentlemen? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to permit application to post signage for the Buzzards Bay Coalition Watershed Ride scheduled on October 2nd, 2022 be issued.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to give permission for signs. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, and is unanimous. We're going to now ask Mr. Korea, Mr. School Resource Officer Carl Baptiste, Detective Dean Deekus, and Michelle, are you here, Michelle? Hi, Michelle, from the Wareham Education Association to come forward, please, and just stand facing us while we read you something, and then we'll have photo ops. Come on over, guys. Okay.
We're going to take pictures.
Yes, we're going to take pictures afterwards. One day I was coming out of Town Hall and I saw all of these orange chairs, and I thought, what's going on? And then I saw you, and I saw what you were doing, and I was very touched, and I assure you that anybody who has told me what they saw is also very touched. So, we are giving each one of you a certificate that says, can you hear me, Bowen? I'll do it soon. The town of Wareham recognizes Chief Walter Korea, School Resource Officer Carl Baptiste, Detective Dean Deekus of the Wareham Police Department, as well as Michelle LeFrancois, Associate Vice President of the Wareham Education Association, for creating the display on June 2nd in honor of the 19 schoolchildren, two teachers, who lost their lives in the shooting at the Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas on May 24th, 2022. The inspiration for the display began with Officer Baptiste, who, in concert with Chief Korea, arranged to use two blue chairs representing the teachers and 19 orange chairs representing the children from the old Deekus School. The next stage involved the cooperation of Ms. LeFrancois from the Wareham Education Association, who researched the names of each of the lives of the lost and printed their photos with their names and their ages. Finally, the display was created by Chief Korea, Detective Dean Deekus, and Officer Carl Baptiste in front of the Wareham Town Hall. Once again, the community of Wareham has shown that this community effort of a mournful yet perfect memorial to the lives taken too soon was greatly appreciated by our citizens. The Board of Selectmen thank all of you who were involved on this solemn occasion, presented this 26th day of July, 2022, from the Wareham Board of Selectmen. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to ask you to line up and pitch your opportunity. Do we need these lights on? Come on, gentlemen. Okay, all guys in the beginning, all guys in front, and back. Jordan, you can come in. Come on, hurry my keys.
Yep.
Okay. Tricia in front, Michelle in front. Now, those of you on the side, turn this way, and those of you on the side, turn this way. Come on, I can do this. All right? How are we doing now? Can you see all of their faces?
Should we take them off, though?
Yeah, we're going to take the masks off.
Do you want the lights on?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Where are they?
Right there, I don't know. Can you see the recipients' faces? Because that's what's important. All set? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate, appreciate what you can do, appreciate, not appreciate why you're here. Mr. Lester, would you step forward, please? And introduce yourself and tell us why you would like to be on the open space committee? And expect a lot of questions. Mr. Besson, he likes...
Oh, good, I like lots, I like lots of questions. Questions are good. By the way, would it be better if I were wearing a mask? I've been vaxxed, I've actually had COVID recovered last week, so I think...
I prefer you to put a mask on, sir.
Do we have?
Yes. There are at least two of us who have medical conditions that preclude us wanting to breathe your air. Sorry.
I totally appreciate that.
No, and I appreciate you telling us.
Thank you. My name is Patrick Lester. I'm, I live on Cromesit Road with my wife and I, Sinmenger. Lived in Wareham for, since 2005. Been in Massachusetts since 1973. I grew up in Oregon, came out here for graduate school. When I retired, I retired from UMass Medical School as Associate Director of Program Development and Enterprise Project Management, doing work with the medical school and several state agencies across New England, doing just that strategic planning, program development. I spent several years working in government, including the Executive Office of Health and Human Services and Commission for the Blind, Executive Office of Elder Affairs, and then also spent a dozen years at, in high tech, working for Unisys Corporation, selling large, large systems for them. So I've had a varied career. When I, I should also say that in 2010, before I retired, my wife and I set up Beaverdam Partners, which is the parent corporation for Wareham Week, Sipican Week, Dartmouth Week, and I don't think I'm jumping the gun, I think we've announced it today, we're also going to be opening a fourth paper in Middleborough and Lakeville shortly.
Oh, wow.
So the paper has been a great success, and we get a lot of good feedback from people. I'm also the treasurer of Wareham Core, which many of you know about, certainly Judith, you know about it well, where that nonprofit was set up, it stands for Community Outdoor Recreation, and is focused on improving playgrounds primarily, but is really, it's a broadly-designed nonprofit that can kind of work on anything that is recreation space connected. We've also contributed funding to the Hammond Playground, primarily around the pickleball courts. We've made applications in the past to actually do some playground rehabilitation, as I think that Hammond is a completely underutilized playground. It was rated in 2014 under the BL Associates as the top opportunity playground in Wareham, but really remains, other than the work that we were able to get accomplished through, through parking receipts funds to get the pickleball courts put in, the tennis court rehabilitated, the basketball court rehabilitated, but there's still a lot more that could be done on that particular playground. So my interest in open space has a lot to do with, you know, coming out of, it's represented by my interest in playgrounds. I am interested in playgrounds of all sorts. I am a big user of our open space, our recreation space, trails. I use several of them. My wife and I are active walkers and would like to see careful and appropriate expansion wherever possible. That being said, I think it's important for committee members to be mindful that while we can be advocates for open space, we also have to look at most appropriate use of open space. There are not all spaces need to be playgrounds, not all spaces need to be recreation space. There are those instances where we need to take a look at the financial base of our community and our, our tax base, and we, those need to be weighed carefully. So I think committee members, I think we need to have committee people who are interested in robust conversations about all these kinds of things, and I think that's what I hope to bring to, to the, to the open space committee. I, I should add that I think that the, that the strategic plan that was produced by the committee in 2017 to 23 is an excellent plan. It's, it's one of the most thorough plans that I've seen. It's, it's longish, and it's a little inaccessible for most people, and, and should probably be cut down in its body to about 10 or 12 pages so that people can get to it and understand it. But I think that's an example of the kind of strategic plan that we all need. And I would also say that one of the things that's really important for committees, having spent so much time in project management at all different levels, is it's really important to report out how you're doing when you, when you take on projects. I mean, it's, it's interesting that there's, I was just doing some background checking. You know, it's, currently there's over $6 million in community preservation funds out. But it's very difficult to get an understanding of where any of those projects stand, and I think that when we're, we're trying to get buy-in on communities and projects and government, it's really important that once we approve things, we also then tell people how we're doing. Where are we in all of these projects? How much money have we spent? How much is left over? What's the progress? Because I think that while it's true that most people don't look at it, they don't chase it, there are enough people who you want to influence who are interested. So I think that we can do maybe even a little better in, in making sure we, we tell people how we're doing, and that's how you build an organization. But that's mine.
Thank you. I'm going to ask my board members if they have questions. Just so that everyone knows, we have a hearing at 7:15, but it is 7:15 or after, and so I will continue this conversation, and then we will go to our two hearings, okay? Do any of my board members have any questions or concerns or comments?
No, I, he covered, he covered everything.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to say...
Excuse me. Mr.?
No, it's fine, she can go first.
Okay.
I'd just like to make a comment in that I really appreciate your interest in open space, et cetera, et cetera. What I'm even more impressed by is your need to know that communication has to go out about how this happens, so I really appreciate that side of what you bring to the table as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
Well, first you had me at Core, so, thank you for that. I'm sure I'll be hunting you down and talking to you more.
Well, I may, I may be hunting you down first.
I'm a huge supporter of the youth in this town, so, thank you for that.
Thank you.
I really have no questions. You did a great job explaining everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Slavin?
I apologize, Mr. Lester, if I have to get up and walk away for a minute. For those of you who don't know, I basically had some back surgery again just recently, and I've had some pieces inserted into my body, and that call was basically sent at my appointment tomorrow to finish off, basically electrifying my nerves, my spine, et cetera.
I know you've been struggling with it.
Bionic man.
Yeah, and that's the reason why, even though I am the District Four Representative for the Mass Municipal Association, and I was supposed to be presenting this past weekend there, I could not make the trip because of the length of the actual ride.
Wow.
Which is very disappointing. which is very disappointing because I've been at this a long time, and I really enjoy it when we sit there and make contact with new selectmen and explain the ins and outs of how everything works. I'm sure some of them miss me, and of course, I don't think the Executive Director does because I've been banging away at him accepting Plymouth County as a legitimate government, but that's something else that we go back and forth on.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Lester?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Mr. Lester, I have no questions. Actually, I do. The report expires in 2023, so I hope that the day after you are sworn in, you will start figuring out how to get an up-to-date and, in your words, shorter and more user-friendly version of that plan available to the public.
Thank you.
And it's important for the public to be able to contribute to it as well, as opposed to the 17 people who contributed the last time around. Thank you. I will accept a motion.
I'll make a motion, I make a motion, that we appoint Patrick Lester to the Open Space Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Thank you. Mr. Lester, you can pick up your paperwork after you hand in your ethics certificate and your affirmation that you have read the open meaning law in the Board of Selectmen's Office.
Thank you very much.
And then you can go to the clerk's office and be sworn in.
It's interesting. I will make a comment about the conflict of interest. It's fascinating to me. I've been doing conflict of interest certifications since the mid-'80s, when I was in government. And it's very, I have to say that the conflict of interest rules that govern municipal workers are much, since they've been revised, too, they were revised in the early 2000s, are so much more complicated and nuanced than that that affects state government officials. It's almost as if you have two different conflict rules. There's so many more ambiguities at the local level that I never knew until I looked over that questionnaire. Now I have a whole new appreciation for the conflict issues that the local officials have to deal with.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and thank you for volunteering your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
It is now 7:15, so I will ask the representatives of Stone Path Malt to come forward, please, and I will ask for a motion to open the hearing.
I'm assuming open hearing A, correct?
Yes.
So I make a motion that we open a hearing for the application from Stone Path Malt LLC, DBA Stone Path Malt, 11 Kendrick Road, Wareham, for an alteration of premises of an existing annual common Victula Wine and Malt Beverages License under the provisions of Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws for the year 2022.
Is there a second to that motion to open the hearing? Second motion. All those in favor of opening the hearing, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, the hearing is open. Would you introduce yourself, sir, and tell us what it is that you're looking for under the alteration of premises first?
Good evening. I'm Mark St. Jean, Stone Path Malt, 11 Kendrick Road.
You can bring the mic closer to you if you want.
Is that good? Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. Prior to COVID, we, I spoke with Susan Gifford about the Farmer's Brewers License, which allows breweries to make beer, sell beer on premise, and also sell beer off premise. And that law is pretty antiquated now. Most brewers don't use local ingredients. Where at Stone Path Malt, we actually produce the ingredients, and under Section 12, we sell our customers' beer brewed with Stone Path Malt. So I approached Susan, and I said, you know, we should, because we are so unique, our company is so unique to Massachusetts, we should be able to sell our customers' beer brewed with Stone Path Malt off premises. We have eight taps, and the concept was to basically have a cooler, like you see in most breweries, where you can come in and buy a four-pack or a six-pack if you like a particular beer that's on tap. So the path of least resistance was to get a law passed, which we finally did two years later, that, I call it the Stone Path Malt Law, which is, you know, basically the ability to have a Unit A, Unit B, Unit B being the off-premise portion, which basically entails putting a cooler in and selling beer. It's 60 square feet. So at some point, I was, boy, I didn't really realize I was opening a Pandora's Box here, that we had to go get a law, get another license, but here we are. We did get the law passed. We went in front of the town, and that was voted, again, pre-COVID. It has to be a year and a half, maybe two years ago. So that's our concept. We have an alteration of premise, and we also have the, I think it's a Section 15 package store license, which, again, our intent is not to open up a package store at Stone Path Malt. It's basically to put a cooler and sell our customers' beer brewed with our malt that we have on tap.
So we actually technically have two hearings, one for the alteration of premises, and the second hearing would be for the, what I call, Packy license, okay?
Right.
Please address both of them, and then we will have to-
Okay.
-close the hearing, then we'll have to open the next hearing, and we'll do a shorter version, and we'll be able to go from there.
So that was a summary of what we're doing.
Yep.
The alteration of premises is basically cutting out 60 square feet of space to put a cooler in the taproom that will contain our customers' beer, mostly cans, brewed with our malt.
Thank you. Do any of you gentlemen have questions? Mr. Besson?
Just a comment. I think it's a fantastic idea. I mean, allowing people to be able to take home, you know, because you can only stay so long, right? So I think it's nice, you know, on a night they just want to sit back at home and maybe watch a game and, you know, drink your favorite beer. So I think it's a great idea, and it's definitely something that you've spent a lot of time in trying to make happen, and I'm glad that at the state level it happened. And, you know, moving forward, I think it'd be a great step for your business.
Yeah, we've had a lot of interest, where people have come in. We're up to probably about 100 breweries right now. Not everyone can distribute to Massachusetts, but our beer selection changes all the time, and it's just a good way. Again, my, one of my goals for Stone Path Malt is to try and pull people off the highway so they don't have to sit on the bridge and give them an experience here in Wareham. And this is just one of the pieces of the puzzle that I think may be able to work, and not only to benefit us, but also benefit, you know, other business owners in town as well.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
Just a comment, more or less. I've known Mr. St. Jean pretty much since he's opened. Possibly one of his first customers. Wonderful brews, wonderful food. And I just want to thank you for everything you do for the community.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin?
Evening, Mark. How are you?
Aye, aye, aye.
I'm looking at the layout for the change. It's hard to read because of the dark areas. Can you show me or tell me, on the Unit B versus Unit A, how are you going to sit there and sell beer? How are you going to deliver beer to a customer if they're in Unit A, which is the taproom?
So the, are you looking at the plan that was submitted? So you can see, yes, you can see how Unit B is kind of boxed out?
Do you want this?
I don't, sorry.
That's okay.
It's okay.
We're not in the office, and I have my package.
That's okay. I think it'd be easier for you to explain it with that in front of you. Go ahead. And the flip side has your plot on it.
Yep. So, yeah, this isn't the right plan that I submitted. Is there another plan?
Show you what I have here, but that's my question, because I was looking at it.
Is this the one you have?
This one.
My concern is that I don't think ABCCs go by this.
Yeah, that's not the plan.
Is this-
Do you have a new one?
Those are different ones. Is this one? Oops.
Unfortunately, I believe we have the wrong plan.
Yeah, that's not-
Okay, well, maybe you can, maybe you can-
So I'm going to address this?
Can you draw on this and tell us what it's going to look like? And could you, yeah, step back. Thank you.
Sorry to make life difficult.
It's important to have the delineation specific so that we can make sure that we're, if we choose to grant the application.
So what you see, what you basically see here that's gray, darkened, those are the two bathrooms, and that's the access into the building. The, excuse me, the plan is to just carve out 60 square feet, put a cooler where the existing cooler is, and it's basically a table or a bar area.
Here's your 60 here.
Wait here. This is where the cooler is going to go? This is the existing cooler?
What are you going to do with the, you're going to put a separate cooler somewhere else?
If you have a mic, please.
Yeah, it'll be a separate cooler.
Okay. My concern is that-
Use the mic, please.
I am as best I can. Basically, you have people sitting here like we usually do during the events, and then you have the cooler here that goes around like this. You have to, I believe, somehow have a separation of your, basically the bars, if you want to call it that, with the food, separate from the package store.
Yeah, so this is going to be, this will be carved out and closed out.
Okay.
And we can close this out as well, if need be.
And where are you going to actually do the transactions and delivery of the beer? But it's going to be open here? All the way around?
Nope, it's going to be closed in.
So you're going to close this in here?
Yep. And this will be a bar here.
And where are you going to store the cases of beer versus the stuff you stir? And they'll be separate from your regular stock?
Yeah, yep.
Mr. St. Jean, I'm going to ask you to mark up the copy as well, best you can, and submit it to us, because that will be part of the record.
There was a copy on fire.
Right, but I need you to- Okay, so this is what, yeah.
This will be a cooler here.
Yep.
And this will be separated.
Okay.
And this is basically where people will have the supply and carry out. You can just exit.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, there is a plan on fire. And I've already talked to Ralph from the ABCC. We've had numerous conversations already because of, you know, this is a-
You need to be able to separate the space.
Yeah, this is a unique situation where, you know, technically, you're having a Section 15 and a Section 12 in, you know, separate units. So he's, I've had three different conversations with him. I think he's in agreement with what we're doing and how we got to where we are.
Thank you.
I've always found that Ralph is very reasonable to work with. This is Ralph Sacamoni, who's the Executive Director of the ABCC. My concern is that you make sure that you supply here to us the actual final drawing that's laid out very clearly. Because what happens is, we forward that to him.
Right.
Whether he and you agree on something, if that layout doesn't comply-
Yeah, this plan will not, this plan will not work. I'll make sure Cassandra has-
Okay, I appreciate it.
The appropriate plan that was submitted.
I just don't want to see you get delayed for weeks and weeks because of it. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Cassandra's going to be out for the next couple of days, so Monday would be the first day that you could actually-
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I met with Cassandra yesterday to drop off all of my cards, and she had mentioned that we're probably going to be into a little bit of a delayed period right now anyways, so.
Okay, great.
I'll come in on Monday with the appropriate plan.
Are there any other questions from Mr. St. Jean, St. Jean, on the application for the alteration of premises? Is there anyone here who would like to speak on behalf of the applicant? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against the application? Hearing none? I will ask for a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion that we close the hearing for the application from Stone Path Malt LLC, DBA Stone Path Malt, 11 Kendrick Road, Wareham, for an alteration of premises of an existing annual common Victula Wine and Malt Beverages License under the provisions of Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws for the year 2022.
And that in, before we process the request, we will have the appropriate floor plan designation submitted to our office. That's part of your motion, right?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
I thought it would be a separate motion, but we can come back.
No, that's okay.
Just so you know, there were two plans that were requested. So this plan was part of it, but the plan that actually shows the space, so I'll get that, too.
Okay, thank you. I need a second for the motion to grant. Is there any further discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment just in general that Stone Path Malts come in. We've had a little difficulty with the water pollution control facility with Stone Path, which Mark continues to just work through, and it's not been easy. The business has been a great boon to the town of Wareham. They provide many events for the town as well, and it's a pleasure really working with a business that does everything they can to make life better for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, all.
No. Thank you. Okay, we have closed that hearing. Now I will accept a motion. We already did that motion. Okay, right? Okay. I did the motion to close it. Did we do the motion to grant?
No.
No, because I said, I added to your motion, and you seconded it, right?
Yes.
So the motion is to grant the alteration of premises request? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. Now, Mr. St. Jean, I would ask for a motion to open the hearing for the application from Stone Path Malt, blah, blah, DBA Stone Path Malt, 11 Kendrick Road, for an annual package store, package goods store wines and malt license.
I make a motion to approve an application from Stone-
Open the hearing.
To open the hearing for the application from Stone Path Malt LLC, DBA Stone Path Malt, 11 Kendrick Road, Suite B, Wareham, for an annual package goods store wines and malt license under the provisions of Chapter 138 of the Mass General Laws for the year of 2022.
Is there a second to the motion to open the hearing?
Second.
Motion made to open the hearing and seconded. All those in favor of opening the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the hearing is now open. Mrs. St. Jean, I believe you've addressed everything that we needed to have you address. Are there any questions for the gentleman about his application for a package store license?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on behalf of the applicant? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to the applicant? Hearing none? And you have no questions anymore? Okay, I will ask for a motion to close the hearing, please.
I make a motion to close the hearing for Stone Path Malt. I'm going to get an award for all this. LLC DBA Stone Path Malt, 11 Kendrick Road, Suite B, Wareham, for an annual package goods store wine and malt license under the provisions of Chapter 138 of the Mass General Laws for the year 2022.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous.
And then we need a final motion.
And now a motion to grant.
So here comes the good part. We make a motion to grant the application for Stone Path Malt LLC, DBA Stone Path Malt, 11 Kendrick Road, Suite B, Wareham, for an annual package goods store wines and malt license under the provisions of Chapter 138 of the Mass General Laws- and malt license under the provisions of Chapter 138 of the Mass General Laws for the year 2022.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to grant the application. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Abstaining. Mr. St. Jean, I haven't met you bef, well, I did meet you before when you were here before us. I have not had the pleasure of visiting your location, but from everybody that has ever been there, it has been a wonderful experience. I want to thank you for choosing to locate in the town of Wareham. We very much value people who invest in our community, and you clearly have done that. Whatever we can do to make you stay here, let us know.
It's my pleasure being here. We actually love being here, we love the people here, we've got a, I think we've got a great community, and we're going in the right direction, and everything I can do to promote the town, I'm all for it. So, it's a two-way street, and we thank you for having us.
Thank you very much. We're all set with you in the, at all of the paperwork, you'll be able to submit that cleaned-up thing, and Cassie will forward it on Monday to the ABCC, and then they really very quick turnaround.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you, thank you.
And we will hear from Nancy Noick and Edward and Nancy Noick, are you here? Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening. Could you identify yourselves for the record and tell us what you're doing here?
My name is Nancy Noick. I've been in Wareham since 1978, and we own, this is my father, Edward Noick.
Hi.
And we own Marion Auto Sales on Wareham Road, Marion Road in Wareham.
Yeah.
And we had to transfer the dealership license back into our name from the car dealer who left. He retired, and he's moving out of state.
Oh.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the car dealer that was working there leasing from us has left the state, and he's retiring to a golf community, and so we've put in the license back into our name for the family business.
Excellent, thank you. Do any of you have any questions of the applicants? No? No? Mr. Slavin?
No, I've actually been over there with the previous person running it, gone through with the account for the amount of cars allowed, and the condition, everything else is fine. There's no issues at all.
Okay. I just had one question for you. You have on the, it's limited to fifteen vehicles, and as Mr. Slavin said, he did a field trip for all of the Class Ones, Two, and Three in this town, because we believe from time to time that people might be over the limit. But I noticed that you are saying that you have, you're limited to six unregistered or inoperative vehicles with all vehicles and parts in the building or concealed by a fence. I don't understand whether you're asking
There's going to be the front row
Yeah.
Of cars that are going to be for sale.
Yeah.
Which would be fifteen.
Which would be fifteen.
This is what you submitted, yeah?
Yeah, and then there's a back row that would be six cars that is what the mechanic is working on, so they're not moving
They can't be for sale until they're fixed. That's, it might be one, there might be six.
Okay. I'm a grammar perfectionist, so, limited to six unregistered or inoperative vehicles with all vehicles and parts in the building or concealed by a fence, is that what you're asking for? I don't think it is.
We're asking for the fifteen cars to be on the front row.
Right.
And six cars that are either in the garages
The back of the building are concealed by a fence.
Mm-hmm.
So, basically, not on the sales floor.
Not for sale, no, because they're not operable until you fix whatever it needs, a battery or a tire or whatever, you know?
Yeah. I'm going to ask Mr. Chadwick to have you draw where the fence is, because I just want to make sure that we understand exactly what you're telling us. The fence location isn't marked on the thing, if you could, if you could just mark that out for us, please?
Well, here's the, all right, here's the
So, all of the parts would be, except that what they're using are going to be in the building.
That's going to be here?
Yeah. Okay. So, the six
No, it'd swing around here.
Unregistered, they don't run
Okay.
Cars are going to be
In the back of the lot, it's way back, there's a fence on the back.
We're not going to put them in the front.
No, I know, but are they going to be behind the fence? It says concealed by a fence, are they going to be behind the fence?
So, the cars that they're working on, are they going to be behind here?
Yeah, that's, we're going to put that there, yeah.
Yes, okay, so can you write on that, please, that inoperable cars under reconstruction will be behind that fence?
Oh, you don't want to put up there for sale until
Right.
It's ready.
Okay, I just, again, we don't want you to be criticized for something that we have not correctly licensed you to do. Thank you.
Cars back here.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any further questions of the applicants? No?
No, I don't think so.
No, excellent. Then I will accept a, oh, all of the paperwork is in order, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
I purchased a car from you guys before, so I'd like to place, I'll just say that as my comment.
Oh, great, thank you.
I will accept a motion to grant.
So, I make a motion to grant the application for Nancy Noick for transfer of ownership of a Class Two license from Gateway Enterprises, Inc., DDA Marion Auto Sales, to Edward Noick and Nancy Noick, DDA Marion Auto Sales, 370 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass, under the provisions of Chapter 140 in the Mass General Laws. Do we want to stay with the adjusted diagram in this?
No, we'll attach it to the license, thank you. Is there a second to the motion to grant?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Abstaining, it is unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm guessing that you could pick it up on Monday at the office. Again, our full-time gal is on a couple of days vacation. The paperwork will be signed and in the office on Monday to have you pick up.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for choosing to do business in Wareham, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed.
Nice.
Thank you.
Okay, what have we got left?
We have acceptance of some donations.
We did that.
Did the, the only other
The only other
Thank you again.
Do we have any forty-eight-hour business? No, okay. And we have no town administrators report, I'll ask for any liaison reports.
I have
Go ahead, Mr. Chadwick.
Do we want to accept these donations?
I just sign it.
Okay.
More or less related to the, I wouldn't say the school committee, but I met with the new superintendent on Friday. Very nice gentleman, and I
That's okay.
I believe he, the committee that hired him made a great choice, and I'm very impressed with his resume, so I'm excited to be working with him.
Great, thank you. Mr. Bessie?
Nothing tonight.
No. Mr. Slavin?
I have a few things here. The House and Senate have finalized the budget, basically it's done, the governor's signed most of the pieces. We'll see if there's going to be any separate earmarks or any other pieces coming down the line, as I said, we're waiting on the governor for some issues here. Town meeting warrant articles, basically the ones that are still sitting, they stalled in the House and Senate, were virtually right about the time where they go on vacation for a month, so the chances of some of those articles that we've been waiting for to go through probably will not go through. We'll have to watch very carefully to make sure they don't get what they call stale, and whether we have to go back and go back to town meeting and do them again, which is always a possibility. We'll see what happens. We only have till the end of this year, and then it becomes another new session, except going down the line. A couple of issues have come up, and I think it's difficult, because again, we have three new selectmen, and there's always been controversy about what our job is as a, as a liaison to the different committees, boards, commissions. It's a policy, it's not a Mass General Law, it's something the town of Wareham put in, and the job really, and we've all violated one way or another during all the years, is that we're there to help the particular committees, boards, or commissions. When we go, we basically sit in the audience like everybody else, we don't sit up on their, like, we're here, you don't sit up here with them, per se. If they ask a question of you, fine, if not, we don't interfere, or we don't volunteer anything, saying I have an answer or anything else, because it has to be them asking you, because we are not part of their board, and that's a hard thing sometimes to understand, that we're really not there to run their board for them or tell them which way to go.
And can you just, at the end, when the meeting is over, what is the liaison supposed to do?
Well, I'll continue along the line.
Oh, okay.
The real reason why we put this in place, and we haven't used it properly, in my opinion, and I'm as guilty as anybody else, we're supposed to come back, you know, at every selectman's meeting, and say what the board's done, what they haven't done, what's going on, but the real thing is to give the board a heads-up of what's coming down the line, especially in the licensing boards, the three. I'm hoping someday we'll find some way of getting those three boards to talk to each other better, because a lot of times what happens is, they'll get an approval from the Conservation Commission, a particular, you know, person, then they'll go to planning and say, well, you have to give me the, you know, the approval, because Conservation said it's okay. And what really has to happen is, these boards have to work together and sometimes have joint meetings to get this thing done properly, and also speed up the process. Wareham has a history of being known as a difficult community to get things done quickly, and the longer it takes for a person to come in and try and get a business set up, or land changed, whatever else, every time there's a delay, it's very expensive, especially when they have lawyers, et cetera, engineers, they have to show up every time. So, again, you know, what we do really is to help, and the real thing is communication of what's happening, and that's the biggest issue we have, and a lot of the committees and boards are like silos, they keep everything internally, and it really doesn't work, and I'm hoping down the line that we can come up with that, but again, the job for myself, everybody else, is just to forward the information, you know, to the whole boards, we know what's going on. That's why you'll see on a weekly basis, I put out a letter usually, explaining what's going through the MMA, SERPET, et cetera, when I have my meetings, so everybody in the board knows what's going on. I also forward federal and state rules and regulations that are coming down and changes, because they're, when I do that, the information is like current, and it's important that we know, because a lot of times we think we can do something, and they've already changed the rules on us, especially like the Zoom meetings, and they were going to be canceled out, now they're back to March of 2023. Thankfully, they did not make the requirement that we had to televise them all, because none of the municipalities have the ability to televise every board, commission, and committee meeting. It's physically impossible, and the state was not going to finance it, so they, actually, we got them to throw that out. So, that's my real comment there, is that, you know, we're not there to be part of their committee, we're there to help them if they ask only. Thank you.
And I would add that you are not required to go to any of their meetings. It's voluntarily up to you. If you think that there's something exciting on their agenda, go. If you think they're just, you know, or if you've got three meetings to go to, you're going to have to choose one, that kind of thing. So, it is not a requirement, it is a courtesy, okay?
Yeah, it's a perk, if you want to call it that.
Okay. Any other things, Mr. Slavin?
No, I think I'm okay, I've got some other things that we'll try and clean up over the next few weeks, I think.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wertz?
Just to further the comment briefly on liaison and initiative reports, I found that I'm liaison to several committees that are complementary to each other, and I try every week to go to at least one of those meetings, and it has helped me to understand the overall picture of what's happening when I do have the insight of how people are approaching what their specific committees address.